All right, I'm going to call to order the July 1st, 2020 emergency meeting of the Newport Beach City Council. Madam Clerk, roll call please.
The record will reflect that all members of council are present.
All right, we'll first start with invocation. Since it's an emergency, I didn't ask anyone to do it. Is there a volunteer for invocation today? All right, Mr. Muldoon, and then how about Mr. Duffield for the Pledge of Allegiance? So why don't we stand?
Okay, Heavenly Father, we come before you asking for humility and patience with each other as we watch this process unfold, that we be considerate and kind. And we thank for those participating who are calling in or being in the room next. And we ask for continued protection over our city and over our nation. Jesus' name, amen.
Please join me in the pledge of allegiance of our great flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, given that we'll have public comments on agenda items during the agenda topic itself, I'm going to move into current business and just say real quickly, the information that I'm asking staff to discuss right now is information that they provided to me this morning. Given the public safety concerns that I had coming out of that conversation, I've called for an emergency meeting to discuss the fact that we are heading into the largest beach weekend that we have in our city. Unfortunately, it's come together with the largest swell, or one of the largest swells that we will see, which will of course affect our lifeguards significantly. But then we received news today that's going to affect our lifeguards even further. So with that, I'm going to hand it over to Ms. Lee Young, our City Manager.
Yes, okay, thank you, Mayor and City Council. So I'll just recount very briefly. Yesterday, we received news that two of our seasonal lifeguards had tested positive for the COVID virus. And with that, we immediately went into our standard protocols that we have set up for this type of thing, and that requires immediate contact tracing. So we did that through yesterday night, actually into very early this morning as well. And with that, that resulted in a significant number of additional staff that would need to be quarantined and go through the testing process and the protocols that come from there. And so with that type of number that we're dealing with, there's a concern that Chief Boils and I, in discussing that particularly as Mayor, you had mentioned, with this current weekend being the busiest weekend on our beaches and staffing levels there, in addition to our junior lifeguard program that starts next Monday, that does require our lifeguard staffing resources. And with that, this meeting is brought forward with consideration of an emergency ordinance to look at closure just for this weekend, particularly this Saturday, of the beaches in light of that public safety aspect of supporting and protecting our beach areas.
All right, Chief Boils, why don't you come up? For members of the public, it's worth noting real briefly that the lifeguard department is under the authority of our fire department. So Chief Boils is both the chief of the fire department as well as lifeguard. So go ahead, Chief. Bottom.
There we go. Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor, members of council, Chief Jeff Boils, your lifeguard, or lifeguard and fire chief at this point. Sorry about that, we've been dealing with lifeguards all morning. So as City Manager Lee Young said yesterday, we had notification that two of our seasonal staff tested positive. So we immediately went into our contract, contact tracing mode with our Human Resources and Risk Management Division, which is a very detailed survey of where these employees were for the last week to 10 days and who they came in close contact with. And that's, and exposure is different than a contact. And exposure is defined as within six feet or less for greater than 15 minutes. So that was the criteria that we used. These two employees happened to be, for the last week or so, in a situation where they were doing some lifeguard recertification in classroom settings. They were doing project management and some coordination and curriculum development for the upcoming junior lifeguard program. So they were around other groups of people. So if you're picturing a lifeguard out in a tower that tends to be secluded, the situation for these two was a little bit different. So that's why our concern grew of who they were in contact with and had potentially exposed. So we reached out and contacted everyone that was in what we consider to be an exposure situation with those two employees, and we're going to have them tested as well. But the date that we're starting from, according to the doctor that we're sending them to, will be June 25th, and we start the 14-day quarantine period from that point forward. So we have a significant number of employees that are under the quarantine process right now that we're not able to utilize.
All right. Anything else?
No.
Okay.
Did you have anything, Mike, you want to add to that?
No, all right. Okay, do we have any questions up the dais? Ms. Dixon.
Just some facts. So a significant number, how many are in quarantine?
Twenty-three.
Total of 23 at this point?
Correct.
How many seasonal guards do we have?
We have a total of... In the operations, 95, Mike? We have 95 in operations that we would be utilizing for our tower lifeguards over the coming 4th of July weekend, and actually what we consider A-level staffing. We have additional lifeguards that we utilize for junior lifeguards as well. So the total there is about 140, 150 in that range.
So the 12 who are quarantined, that cuts into your availability, the number of...
Sorry, 23. 23 are quarantined.
Or 23, it cuts into, so you'll be down, like literally down, but you don't have any others?
We do have, we do have others. But those are the ones, we would have been utilizing them come Monday for junior lifeguard instruction. We would have been utilizing them in the towers over this busy weekend during Friday, Saturday, Sunday. And we don't have, we don't have the ability to utilize them at all. So if you want to speak to the staffing, Mike, perhaps Chief Lifeguard Mike Halfide could speak to the staffing and how this impacts him.
Okay.
Good afternoon, Mayor O'Neill, council members, Mike Halfide, your chief lifeguard. So our staffing for this weekend, we have 76 lifeguards staffed in operations for Friday, 79 on Saturday and Sunday. We are able to meet that staffing without any problems, even in spite of those affected members of our organization. We have 11 extra lifeguards available on Friday, one on Saturday, and then three on Sunday. And then we also have our off-duty full-time staff that rotate on a shift basis that we could recall in an emergency.
So we're not short of available staff. You could staff up to your planned levels.
Yes, even with these lifeguards being out, we would be able to provide actually an enhanced level of staffing than what we would normally have on a July weekend.
Could I ask another question? Are we, maybe the city attorney too can answer. Are we under, is the city under recreational purposes only on the beach? Are we still under that executive order from the governor? Are we still under the executive order of recreational purposes allowed on the beach only, recreational purposes?
Active recreation.
Active, yes. So, Mr. Halfide, have we been enforcing that, active recreation?
We're doing an education, but we're not enforcing.
Okay, how's it worked in the last several weeks?
Not very well.
All right, thank you very much.
Mr. Muldoon.
Yes, thank you, Chief. I'm sorry for those who are receiving the positive tests and for those who are quarantined. The quarantine does not mean they're positive, means out of abundance of caution, we ask them to essentially stay away from those that are vulnerable and coworkers here at work.
Correct.
And just to reiterate, you said in light of the quarantine number of 23 and the two positive tests, you still have adequate staffing for what you would normally do on a weekend such as this in Newport Beach?
Yes.
Thank you.
So one of the, one of the concerns that I had spoken to with Chief Boils is even with inadequate staffing level, given the number of people we anticipate seeing and the amount of swell that we're seeing, the concern was that there'd actually be more, more lifeguards needed, and even on an enhanced basis. So when we are down 23, there is a concern about staffing levels if we see higher than, higher than we would anticipate in terms of population on our beaches in addition to the concern that if we have incredibly high swell, especially with people coming in who are not, you know, regular swimmers, I should say, in the ocean, that we'd actually be potentially at risk. And so that's, that was the concern that we had, we had put forward. So maybe that's, that's the, that's the reason for the call for the emergency meeting is as we, as we move into a weekend where we are, we know we have people that are coming into the city in large quantities, who are not, who just don't have that expertise with the water, that not being able to call in extra reserves is a big problem. And that's my understanding. So, you know, where is that, is that understanding correct, or where are we headed with that?
Based on our current projection of the weather, the staffing and the increased crowds, that we believe that with the staffing that we have would be adequate. And if we needed more, we would be able to scale up. But there's just a certain point where all the towers are filled, we have extra relief guards, all the lifeguard units and rescue boats are filled. There would only be so much more surge staffing that would be useful.
Okay, Ms. Brenner.
Oh, could I?
Sorry, Ms. Lee Young, go ahead.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I just want to add one additional point too, though, is we are with this holiday weekend really planning a stepped-up enforcement level, particularly with our beach curfew at night, where we do typically, we always enforce the curfew, but this year, we're really going to have a zero tolerance for folks on, on the beaches at that 10:00 PM time. So together with our, our police resources, we were planning on quite a heavy enforcement there that would also, I think, extend some of the hours with the lifeguards. And we do need some of the assistance with the lifeguards together in doing that piece of it. So there are some additional resource areas, I think, as the plans are putting together, that are a little bit beyond the, the normal lifeguard services that we provide through the towers that continue into the, later into the night than typical.
Okay, Ms. Brenner.
I keep having to remind myself when I hear adequate staffing levels and that we are able to protect the public at the level that we normally do, I then have to remind myself of the COVID situation. Because I sort of get distracted into thinking, oh, well, we can handle this because we've got, you know, enough lifeguards and we've got enough people and we're used to all this. But the extraordinary circumstance of the COVID situation is really what makes it even more troublesome and the exposure that we're putting those lifeguards under by having to possibly rescue victims of that is, I think, really significant and something that I, I remind myself, but I want to remind everybody else that that's what we're dealing with. It's not just having enough lifeguards under normal circumstances for this number of people.
So if we, if we're doing the contact tracing and we have the testing coming forward and we have two people, but 23 are in quarantine, and we find out that more of those have tested positive the next couple of days, and then we go through tracing and find out a number of those people have also been testing positive, what, I mean, what happens at that point? I mean, because now we're, now we're facing additional issues of staffing level concerns. So where, where do we go from there?
I think I'm going to defer to the fire chief on this, other than just that once somebody's tested positive, then we would do contract, contact tracing for them. Many of these same individuals were in a single or couple of locations. And so their on-duty contact tracing was just going to be pretty straightforward. It's just what they do away from the job that would be compounding, Chief.
I think your question was, where do we go from here if we find out that more continue to be positive over the course of the next few days?
It is, and maybe you can also come back to what I tried to express earlier in trying to understand the, the nature of having 23 of our seasonal lifeguards out of commission on a, you know, on a, on a weekend like this. Could you just speak to that and also to, you know, as we have those additional 21 people now and...
Sure, let me, let me try and succinct this down, how convoluted and complicated it can be with our seasonal staff. The next few days will be critical as we watch to see if anybody else develops symptoms. We, we do know that just on the way here, we received word that a third, one of the ones that was exposed, has developed symptoms. He hasn't been tested yet, but if he is then positive, then we take him and contract trace out. A lot of these seasonal staff played water pull together, they went to high school together, they recreate together, they're roommates together. Some of them are brothers and siblings, so there's a, there's a cascading effect here. So the concern is, I'll just put it bluntly, we can staff this weekend, we'll just be stretched pretty thin. So if, if something does go awry over the next few days and we have more positive and we have to quarantine more, then we're, we're in some pretty severe drawdown levels. Right now, if it were today, we could staff it. Tomorrow, we could staff it. It's where does it go? So I can't completely answer that, but out of caution to our employees and the public that we're serving, that's just where we are right now.
All right, Mr. Duffield.
Thank you, Mayor. So I'm reading here where there's quite a few beaches that have been closed. And it kind of concerns me. It seems like everywhere else is closed and we're going to be open. So wouldn't that mean even more people? If we're the only place you can go to the beach? It seems like, the Laguna Beach just closed their beaches, LA County, I'm just reading on and on, but...
I do know that Laguna is closed, LA County beaches are closed, Seal Beach.
And the state has closed their parking lot size of today.
I know Chief Lewis and I have been in talks. We do expect this to be a busier-than-average 4th of July just due to the circumstances leading up to it, but with all the other beaches closes as well. So again, like I said, Chief Halfide and I are confident that we could staff it. We would, we would just staff it thinly. Does that sound accurate?
All right, Mr. Avery. I'm sorry, were you done, Mr. Duffield? Okay, Mr. Avery.
In, in the sailing, boating world, you become really aware of the tides. And they're seem to always kind of be running with you or against you. And it's really important to understand which way the tide's going. And it just seems to me, given all the things we've discussed, from the enhanced wave size to the, to the risks to our staff and to the public, just all the information that just, we've come out here and just discussed, the tide's definitely running against us on this. And so in terms of taking care of public and being sure we can do that on the 4th of July, it just seems to me we should move forward with closing the beach.
All right, any other questions before we go to public comment? Ms. Dixon.
Are we going to hear from the police chief?
Of what it would, yeah, absolutely.
I'd like to hear, ask him a couple of questions.
Chief Lewis.
Good afternoon, Mayor O'Neill. Ms. Dixon, please.
Do we have members of your officers? How is any COVID cases pending right now?
So we don't have any confirmed COVID cases within our police department as it stands right now. We do have individuals that we have quarantined, self-quarantined out of abundance of caution. We do have that, but we do not have any confirmed cases.
How are we surfacing these incidents? Are they being tested? Are they self-reporting?
Many of these, and what has occurred with us is when our officers either make an arrest, have a contact, have some type of interaction with an individual in the public that is COVID-positive, we have a protocols, we have a set of protocols in place. We work with our HR team to address. And we, most of the time, when we have a, a contact exposure, it requires us to remove them from, from their duties and either dependent on the level of it, self-quarantine at home or telecommute or whatever we need to do over that 14-day period.
And do our officers wear masks?
We do. We use, we have, we have a number of levels of facial coverings for them. We have the, obviously, the, the regular facial coverings that we're all familiar with, but we also have the, the face shields and the N95 masks as well, along with gloves and other personal protective equipment for the officers.
Okay, let me shift to enforcement. If we were to close the beach, how would we enforce that?
If we, well, it would depend on what we're talking about. If we're talking about doing it for, for a short period of time, you know, if it's, if it's getting us through this weekend, then my recommendation is that we would do a hard closure. We would, we would either designate a time and we would close for that period of hours and then open it back up. That is unfortunately, with this short time period that we have, there, there's no time necessarily to educate anyone. If we're talking about doing something on Saturday, the idea that we could, you know, leave the beach open from 8:00 AM to 10 o'clock and then try to get people off, I just don't see as feasible when we're talking about hundreds of thousands of people that are going to be gathering. So if we do close it, my recommendation would be is that we do a hard closure for the period of time that's, you know, designated obviously by, by you, if that were to be the case.
Okay, how do we actually keep people from coming to the beach?
When we're talking about a hard closure, we're talking about a hard closure. We would, we would work with our public works team with signage and various different barricades to be able to make it very clear that the, that the beach was closed. And then there would also be a municipal code section available to us to, to use should we need to take some type of enforcement action.
So if people come to the beach, they would, what would happen?
They would be told that the beach was closed.
And then if they refuse to leave?
Our hope would be is that they would comply with our direction.
I guess I'll just ask your educated opinion. If we had a hard closure, complete closure of the beaches of Newport Beach, and can we do that? Can you, I mean, it's always, we've had this discussion before. Can we enforce closure of the beach? It was usually presented that it's very difficult and challenging and difficult to do. But you feel...
It's extremely difficult. It is absolutely extremely difficult to do. But we're in uncharted times right now. So we, whatever direction we get today, we are going to comply with fully and we are going to, we are going to make it happen, whatever that direction may be. But yes, to answer your question, very resource-intensive, short fuse here with our public works team to get this done, it will be difficult, sure. But I believe it's possible.
Okay, thank you very much.
Oh, I'm sorry, Ms. Brenner.
Do you need special authorization from us to cite people? If you had a really difficult case where people did refuse to leave the beach, do you need special authorization to give a citation, or can you do that?
For this, we would, because we're talking about a hard closure. It would be outside of what our municipal code already calls for. So our municipal code calls for between, 10 o'clock is when our closure is and the beach opens again at 6:00 AM. So if we were going to close anytime outside of those hours that are already authorized, then we would need special authorization to do that.
I'll just point out real quick, it's in Section 7 of the draft ordinance.
So this would give you everything you need to do that?
Yes.
Okay.
So following up on the question of, of this, the, part of the challenge and why I called an emergency meeting is exactly what you just described, which is if we're going to do this, we have to give our public works team as much time as possible to get this ready. Because we recall, having our beaches closed previously, how difficult that was. And I, and I think it's worth pointing out that as opposed to that situation, this is a, this is a local decision being made with local facts, using local talent to figure out what's, what's right. And so if, if we're walking into a 4th of July weekend where, you know, it's, it's being described as adequate but stretched thin, knowing that we have another with symptoms and knowing that we are, you know, we are going to experience an incredibly large swell. And I've talked to a lot of our folks in our surfing community, and they are genuinely concerned because they know what that means, and a lot of people don't who come in. And this is their once, they are only in for a handful of times. So I've, I've talked to a lot of people who are, who are, you know, they know what's happened. They know what's coming this weekend, they're concerned, and, and I'm concerned. And so I'm trying to understand here, as we're, it's being described as stretched thin and you're, you're talking about this. That's why we need to do, we need to have the conversation now with admittedly a somewhat incomplete set of information, but it's because we have to be ready if we're going to be doing this. So that's, I just want to talk about the timing on that. So, so a hard closure, if we did that, we'd have some barricades and fencing up similar to what we had, you know, when we had to have our beaches closed for a few days. The conversation, to your point, about a hard closure for a specific amount of time, that's what we're talking about here. So, and, and on the enforcement side, I think it's probably worth mentioning, and I'll mention that at the end if, if this passes, that there is going to be a significant amount of frustration out there, and I would understand that. I would just ask that no one takes their frustration out on our police department or our lifeguards. They're going to be trying to do their jobs, and it's hard enough. So anyway, we'll, we'll talk about that if it ends up passing. Any other questions of Chief Lewis?
Are we talking about one day or three days? Are we giving that discretion to the city manager?
Well, so the, what I've asked for in terms of crafting this is very similar to what Laguna Beach has done. So Laguna Beach last night at their city council meeting passed a closure that closes a hard closure on the 4th of July and gives discretion to the city manager in consultation, of course, with our police department, public works and fire and lifeguards to close on the 3rd and the 5th as well, if, if the situation warrants it. I believe that technically, under our grant of emergency power, our declaration of emergency, that, that she could actually do everything that we're talking about today already. I appreciate that she wouldn't. I think that it, this is a decision that is obviously so large that a council meeting is, is justified. So not that we're enjoying it, but I wanted to at least, yeah, I, I believe that... So that's what, that's what's proposed in our ordinance. If people would like to see a change, I'm, obviously, we're open to it. But I just wanted to, that's what we're, that's what we're looking at in terms of the proposal. Any other, I'm sorry, Ms. Brenner.
The problem with that is that how long does it take for people to actually become aware of what you're doing? And so if we are just saying on the 4th right now, then I just saw John Pope on Spectrum News this morning saying, you know, we're trying to keep our beaches open. And so at what point do we really start getting the word out to people that our beaches are closed? We don't want them to get here and then find out they're closed and end up just driving around town either, so...
I, I am going to go out on a limb and guess that this will be on CNN. I'm just going to go out on a limb and guess that if Newport Beach closes their beaches, this will be, a few people will find out about it.
Well, and the other thing is, I know what has worked in Los Angeles is people getting the ticket, the $1,000 tickets. And I notice in our ordinance, it says we have the ability to arrest, but when they hear that there is a monetary, a monetary effect as well, I think it makes sometimes a larger impression. So I would just hope that we're getting the word out that we're serious about this and, and quickly enough so that everybody gets the message.
We will, I, I'm confident, I really am, I'm confident that this will be... I mean, gosh, we've got Michelle Gile here, so I'm, I'm sure that, I'm sure that we're going to be okay. Anyway, any other questions? All right, seeing none, we're going to go to public comment. Thank you. Do we have any calls in on public comment? A lot? Just five? All right, well, do we have any comments in the community room first, in person? Go ahead, Craig.
You know, I think the, I'm sure the council will make the right decision, whatever it might be. Either way, I'm just wondering, it seems to me that this whole matter came up because there was some question about staffing for lifeguards. And we just heard from the lifeguard, the lifeguard department that they can staff this. So there's worry about maybe we have, will have more contamination, maybe not enough lifeguards. But I don't, this matter probably wouldn't have even come up if, if nobody had tested positive in the first place. And because of that, there's talk about, you know, being in contact when you, when you're saving somebody and all that. None of this would have come up unless this was a, if the, if the testing positive, some of the lifeguards hadn't come up. So all things being equal, I think that it's a matter of staffing is really the critical factor here. The unintended consequences to close the beach at the last minute, there'll be, I don't know how many people come down on the weekend, it'd be 100,000 people. Most of them are going to come down, drive around, they don't even know about it. And there's all these unintended consequences of traffic and parking and who knows what all. Just the thought of it is mind-boggling. So I'm not sure which is, is a better course to take, shut down the beach or... So I'm not sure which is a better course to take, shut down the beach or, and deal with all the consequences or just make sure we have adequate staffing.
All right, any other comments in the community room? All right, coming back, we'll go to, have we added more? A lot more? Seven, all right, we'll go ahead. Oh, I'm sorry, we'll stay in the...
I'm wondering if it was, I got here a little bit late, so I'm not sure if it was brought up, but how this, if it does come to a closure, how this might potentially affect the start of the lower division group for the junior guards starting on Monday?
You know, before we go out, Chief, my understanding is you're going to be recommending that we delay it a week. Yeah, so the recommendation is to delay a week given the number of quarantine. We can come back and discuss that later, but I'll answer that right off the bat. All right, we'll go to the phones now. If you can hear me, go ahead.
Yes, hello?
Yes, thank you.
Hi, my name's Eric Higby and I was born and raised in West Newport. And my parents have lived here for 40 years. So when LA County shut down their beaches for the first time, we had people parking on sidewalks, fire hydrants being blocked, crowds that were in excess of stuff we've seen previously, peeing, people peeing everywhere and just, and it's just frankly untenable. And we've already seen an uptick in fireworks around neighborhood. And I'm quite frankly deeply concerned that if we keep our beaches open, that we're, that this is, these problems are just going to becoming far worse. I don't see how closing the beach would necessarily cause any more issues than we would normally already have with the closing of beaches. And closing beaches is just frankly, seems like a far more safe affair.
All right, thank you very much. We'll go to the next caller, please.
Hi, my name's Cheryl Hall and I just wanted to make a few comments. So we know, I hope the lifeguards get better. COVID is running rampant across all counties, Southern California especially. Yesterday, a single day, almost 10,000 new cases recorded with the highest death toll of 110 people. As our leaders, we voted for you to leave and of course to protect us. Despite enough lifeguard staffing, it's troublesome, the amount of people that would come to beaches and droves. Ventura, LA County, Laguna Beaches are all closed. Although it may be difficult to enforce city closure for the beaches, it will show true leadership. Imagine everyone who used to go to all these beaches came here and fled COVID. In the past six weeks, I've only seen 1% to 2% of people on the peninsula wear masks. There are large parties, beer pong parties, people congregating, outing outside their families, playing volleyball. It's been a mess. We are in the midst of the worst pandemic in 100 years. 50% of asymptomatic carriers will have lung damage and we do not know the long-term health consequences if you're infected. For the sake of public health and not only for the Newport Beach community, but for communities that we all belong to, I urge you to vote to shut the beaches down. Otherwise, we will face an overwhelming surge of hospitalization. Riverside is already full, San Bernardino is full. Do the right thing for public health. Ignoring COVID or rationalizing diseases will not make the virus disappear. Do the right thing for the citizens of Newport, healthcare workers, and all the citizens of America. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Otherwise...
All right, go ahead.
Hello?
Hi, go ahead.
Okay, my name is Dr. Weiss and I am calling on an iPhone. I've been a doctor, teacher over at St. Island, I've been at Hope Hospital for 30 years. Last weekend, I live in the Newport Heights and I tried an experiment down to water edge and keep six feet apart from the next person. It was almost impossible with a little bit of fancy footwork, they were, almost, that was on a normal. In light of every day increase in hospitalization, increased ICU rates and decreased deaths, Hope is emergency meeting for its staff today at FDM, discuss if they are prepared to, well prepared to take over the, the, oh, that we have already. Incidentally, there is a study that I read last night, it's one 1,300 patients with nasal tests we've been doing and which goes at best, it only shows 8% false negative. That means out of 10 people tested on the eighth day, which is the eighth day, two people will test as negative as positive. If they're tested on the first or second day, it's almost 100% positive, false negative. It's not a matter of guessing in my mind. Rivers County just backed out, hospital and ICU bed, and in my opinion, insanity even consider beaches open. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, next speaker, please.
Hi, my name is Carmen Rosso and I believe there is a misconception of closing the beach versus people stopping coming to the Newport Beach area during the Fourth of July. I have been here on the Fourth of July, 1989, and many people are not on the beach. They are on the street, on Seashore Avenue, and other areas, at these houses, that's not going to be stopped by closing the beach. So actually closing the beach could be counterproductive because the beach is a big area, open area, people can social distance versus the patios in the houses and the streets. So that's my opinion. Please keep the beaches open.
Thank you. Next speaker, please. Hi, go ahead.
Yes, this is Chris Nielsen, resident down near Newport Beach, near the 20th Street. I just want to thank the council for your work in the past and your continued efforts to keep people here safe. My commitment to Newport Beach is your ship that you've shown and the plans that you have in place. I would urge you to execute that plan. You're one of very few cities in the United States that's actually put together a plan, has been proactive in executing that plan and keeping people safe. I think the data that has been produced by the council over the last several months and been accurate, has been well thought out and has been beneficial to the reopening and the businesses here. What I think we need to keep in mind is balance. We cannot have fear enter in and affect the people here in Newport Beach that we need to continue with life. The open air, the statistics regarding the safety of that, the full faith we have in the lifeguards and the police staff here, amazing, amazing people. I was just out on the beach an hour ago. So I think we've had the change, it's been that we've had two positive lifeguards and I hope that works out well for them and it probably will, but we need to not derail the whole plan and the program here in Newport Beach that this council has worked so hard to have in place. Thank you for your service and I'll know make the right decision. As a backfall, I think a hard close on the fourth, but not affecting the third and the fifth, would discourage a lot of people out here. You know, if that's where you need to go, but I think closing the whole weekend would be really hard for the businesses and particularly those rental units out of this area. Thank you so much for your help.
Thank you. Next speaker, please. All right, go ahead.
Hi there, my name is Stacy. We live down on the peninsula on hold. I wasn't able to hear the rest of the dialogue, but it's curious that beaches would still be open for access if the state parking lots are closed and the other sort of things. Could you be able to run or surf this weekend? That's an consideration we could be made by the group.
We have not, we've not spoken to that issue. The recommendation has been a hard enclosure.
All right.
Okay, we'll go to the next speaker, please. Yeah, you want to pause or mute what you're listening to and then go ahead.
Okay. Hi, my name is Samantha. I live down on the peninsula.
Sorry, hang on just a second. You're fading in and out.
Oh.
Okay, there you go. You sound better, yeah.
Okay. So in regards to closing businesses in the beach and keeping us safe in the community this weekend, I think it's vital to look at not just the short term, but also the long term. When surrounding counties are shutting down, it is inevitable that we will have people coming into our community that we have worked to keep safe. I understand that it is a big weekend for businesses, however, you're risking the potential of going to have forced closures in the long run because of so many outsiders coming in, especially with the lack of enforcement in masks. We're not just talking about people coming into the beaches, they're going to the grocery stores, they're going to stations, into bars, and that, you know, our community are safe. So I really urge you about not just physical health, but also the financial health of those businesses. While one weekend may seem vital, its outcome could affect months of closures and that is something that, you know, I know we focus more on our obvious to open, I mean, it would be a, that all kind of go to waste versus one weekend. In regards to enforcing that, I think there needs to be a monetary value attached to that. I do believe that especially young people find that they are potentially immune or their, if COVID are minor, and that neglects the safety of the elderly in the community, especially asymptomatic carriers. And if there's no monetary attachment or any kind of repercussions, I really don't see the youth following and listening, especially being in Newport for, you know, 10, 15th of July, standing this scene down here. So I hope that you guys make the right decision to keep us safe this weekend so that we can continue living both physically healthy and economically healthy in our county.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next speaker, please.
Hi, this is Nathan Rosenberg, Meroanial council members. I grew up in Credit Almar, I surf on the peninsula and I really appreciate the city's response to this pandemic. It's been great to see facts being shared, database decisioned, and I appreciate the opportunity to comment. I understand that two of the lifeguards have tested positive and because of contact tracing, more have need necessarily been quarantined. If it's, this is a capacity issue, a need to have sufficient self-health and safety at our beaches, I think that having a partial closure, closing the boardwalk, closing the wedge, potentially even closing parking at the beaches, makes sense to limit the amount of people on our beaches so that we can have sufficient health and safety protection. I worry that a full closure would actually be more dangerous than a partial closure. We now know that indoor dining and bars will be closed for the holiday weekend and I think maintaining open space, which is much safer than indoor space, is essential for giving people an opportunity to get out of their hot homes, to have an opportunity for recreation and stay healthy. So I would be much more in favor of limiting hours for beach access, limiting parking and of course, closing the densest areas of our city.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Hi.
Hi, so mute, mute what you're listening to and go ahead.
Okay. Hi, my name is Shane Corwin. I grew up in the harbor and I'm just, you know, first want to recognize the gravity of the decision you guys have in front of you. I'm sure it's pretty daunting. It's, obviously there were people before who spoke to the scientific reasons and the, you know, the public's health concerns. I'm sorry, there's a, there's a, it's feeding back to me, even though I muted my computer.
Well, we don't hear the feedback, so go ahead.
Sorry about that. Yeah, it just, it doesn't really make sense to me for our community to open itself up to be a Petri dish for such a pandemic to spread even worse, especially after some of our lifeguards have been affected and are now quarantining. I hope that other, other people in the community can understand the reasons behind your decision either way. Yeah, sorry, I realized I was a little incoherent, the feedback's kind of throwing me off. Anyways, yeah, thank you, thank you guys for holding this meeting and, yeah, good luck, best of luck. I hope everybody can stay safe.
Okay, thank you. Next speaker, please.
Yes, hi, hello, my name is Scott. I'm a lifelong resident of Newport Beach. I've lived through Fourth of July, I've lived through Fourth of July riots in Newport Beach and I'm a little confused today by the city council meeting. You know, we didn't, after the riots in Fourth of July, we didn't cancel or close the beach the following year. We put a plan in place, we executed on that plan, our lifeguards, our police department, our fire department, all did, have done an amazing job every year during Fourth of July and I would implore the city council to keep the beach open. If the issue is staffing and the police department and fire department... If the issue is staffing, and the police department and fire department have already said that they can staff it, then there shouldn't be an issue. You know, and I'd probably use the words of our illustrious mayor and say, when in doubt, it's always best to err on the side of liberty. You know, it's Fourth of July weekend, it's in the tenth day, couple of COVID tests of lifeguards, not a valid reason to close the beaches to the rest of our citizens. Per the mayor's post this morning, there are literally zero, I think there's one COVID case transmitted outside in China, one. So if that's the problem, obviously that's not a problem. So, that said, I hope you guys have a great Fourth of July weekend, I hope we're all able to enjoy it on the beach, I hope that our fire department, police department can execute their plan and make a safe holiday weekend for us all. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, next speaker, please. All right, go ahead.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yep, go ahead, yes, go ahead.
Hey, I'm from the beach shore. Our family frequent Newport during the Fourth of July, and just like the previous caller was just saying, I think it's important to err on the side of freedom. There are many who have called in with concerns and had some valid points with maybe closing some of the parking to limit a ton of visitors coming in, but allowing a lot of the residents and vacationers who are staying actually in Newport to be able to access the beach. But to ruin the economy and people's lives over some people's concerns, I don't think is, is a smart or wise move on the council's decision to take. But I think, I think we should err on the side of freedom, and those who have concerns, they can stay indoors, you guys can continue to follow your plan that you put in place, and, and I really think if people were real about it, and were, it was a real issue, they would, they would quarantine themselves, that, you know, people wouldn't be going to the beach if, if we really thought it was a concern for health, you know, for the general populace. Some people are more prone to sickness and stuff, and regular flu and cold season, and they should stay indoors as well in those circumstances, but I, I think that that's what we should do, is keep the beaches open.
All right, thank you. Okay, go ahead.
Yes, hi, my name's Janine Bowden, and I'm a business owner down here on the peninsula, and I'm going to speak for me and a couple of our other business neighbors' concerns. When we heard the other beaches were closing, we got into a slight panic. As much as we want to have a lot more people down here, it's great business, a great weekend to make up some of the monies we've lost in the long run, we feel that with so many people coming down here, it's just going to spread this disease more, and in the long run, we're going to end up getting shut down because Orange County then, and our area too, will just, the cases will just go up and they'll close us down again. So, we're in this little long haul, and we'd rather have this, you know, short-term loss in business, and people down here just to be around in the long, you know, in the long term, just keep going, because that would be just horrible if we all got shut down again. Now, as it is, about 80% of the people walking around here and shopping don't have masks, there's only a couple of stores along with mine that require the mask, so they even have that many more people down here without the masks, because we're not the mask patrol, we can't keep telling them to put on their masks walking around on the streets, we can in our stores, they're not going to, and it's just going to spread. So, my vote would be, please just close the beaches for the weekend. Yes, it'll temporarily hurt some businesses a little bit, I'm sure there's still going to be some business, but in the long run, it's going to help us out tremendously. Thank you.
Thank you. Go ahead.
Thank you. This is Susan, Newport High. I only have three. First of all, please, that three, just all we're speaking of, please focus on that.
Sorry, hang, hang on just a second, you're kind of cutting in and out a little bit. Could you start over, please?
Yes. Three days is all we're speaking of. I don't think three days will ruin our economy. Also, with the closures of all the other beaches in LA, Ventura, San Diego, and Laguna, although I'm more bullish as it progresses, leaves very few options except for Newport and Huntington. Think about that very carefully, please. It's not going to be a typical Fourth of July. You already have some people missing or quarantined from your Newport Beach lifeguard. So if more, anything else happens, you're stretched very thin, you're going to have enormous crowds, and just think about the fact that it's three days you're talking about. We are in a pandemic. Thank you.
Thank you. Go ahead.
Jennifer.
Hi, go ahead.
Hello?
Yep, go ahead.
Yeah, I'm just calling from Newport Beach, I'm sorry, I'm hearing back.
Did we lose her?
Can you hear me? I'm sorry.
Okay, no, now we can.
Okay, I'm sorry, it's echoing back, but I just want to say this. Majority of people try to do the right thing, but every time I go down to the beach, it's crowded, people do not have masks on in the, in the supermarkets. I wholeheartedly agree that for three days, people can live through this. In the Declaration of Independence, the first word is life, so we have to protect our citizens right now. We're lucky enough to even have these beaches, and we can live without three days. And what will happen, like you've heard over and over and over again, is every, LA is only 45 minutes away, Riverside, everybody, I mean, so Laguna's closed, LA County's closed, it's just, one and one is two, where are they going to come? I appreciate you all, and I hope y'all stay safe, and thank you for whatever decisions you make.
Thank you very much. How many, how many more do we have? Five? We have 10 more? Oh, is it just max of 10 in our queue? People queue, all right. You can call, but you don't need to, just to be clear. All right, go ahead.
First, Nancy, Nancy Gardner. First, Nancy, Nancy Gardner.
Hi, Nancy, please mute, mute what you're listening to first, and then...
I thought I did, let's see. I thought I did, let's see. There we go. Thank you for having this meeting, and I've heard a lot about following the plan. I don't think the plan anticipated all these other beach closures. I think that we should close the beach, which will be a magnet, and get the word out as fast as possible, so that we can at least keep some of the people who might be coming, and protect ourselves a little. But again, thank you for giving this your consideration.
All right, thank you. All right, go ahead.
My name is Gillian A. Cupp, and I am a resident of the peninsula. I have tested positives for COVID-19 within the last week, and I'm very concerned of the thought of our beaches remaining open this weekend. Over the last few weeks, the number of people coming in to use our businesses and our beaches as a vacation donation and not respecting it as a place of residence has been astounding. I do understand that the Fourth of July is a big day for tourism dollars, but I worry that the beaches and businesses staying open this weekend would hurt them in the long term, and I plan on being here long term and supporting these businesses in the long
Okay, go ahead.
Hello, my name is Roger Johnston, and I am a resident living in Corona del Mar, and I'm wanting the council to make a big, a big decision that is based not in a bubble of Newport Beach, but of what the situation really is with the pandemic. We have been put into a corner because LA has closed its beaches at Laguna, and we have to think of the amount of people that are going to come into this city. I live on Second Street, a few blocks from Corona del Mar Beach, and people are parking six to 10 to 12 blocks away, and walking with their carts, trashing our community, not wearing masks, not paying any attention to social distancing, and that's happening on any week that we're going through now. Now, as the pandemic has got worse, and we are in a very restricted area of, one of the only areas with open beaches, we are going to have the people keep coming in here, littering here, they left dirty diapers on fences, and they have carts, and they park and destroy our area, and with this Fourth of July weekend, it is going to be far worse than Memorial Day weekend. So I'm requesting the council make a decision for the safety of the Newport Beach residents, community, and public safety, and really take into account that we are one small beach line that are left in this part of California for the Fourth of July weekend. Thank you.
Thank you. Still have 10, seven, all right. All right, go ahead.
Yes, hi, my, my name is Shirley, and I've been listening to all the comments, and I totally understand what everyone is saying, and I'm going to be vacationing down there this weekend with all my family, it's been planned for several months. Anyway, I would like to see it maybe just be closed one or two days, so one day would be available for everyone to at least participate, and have, or just close parking lots, boardwalk, all of this stuff, what a lot of people have already said. Thank you for listening to me, and have a good day.
Thank you.
Bye.
All right.
So one day would be available for...
All right, please mute what you're listening to.
...everyone to at least participate, and have, or just close parking lots, boardwalk.
All right, if you can hear me, please mute what you're listening to. All right, go ahead.
Hi, we have to look at the long-term game, not the short game. We have a pandemic on. To close a beach for three days, look at the greater good for the entire Southern California area, is what we need to look at. The pandemic is an issue. Houston is already overflowing. That will be us in Southern California if we do not shut it down. History will not look timely upon making the wrong decision. We have to look at the long-term game, not the short-term fight. Please shut it down for the public health of people, not only in the beach, but the surrounding communities. Please listen to science, respect science. Science is real. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Next, next speaker, please. So hang on one second. So Erin, this is an emergency meeting, I mean, people will keep, keep filling this queue by, because they don't have to be here, they can call in. When can I cut this off?
I think you can give another 15 minutes.
Okay. Hi, go ahead.
Good afternoon, my name is Portia White.
I need you to speak closer to your phone, please.
Okay. My name is Portia White, and I'm trying to support a hard closure of July 3rd.
Sorry, Portia, it's really, really quiet on our end. Can you get closer to your phone, or...
Oh, sure, I'm actually on the phone.
Okay, that's better. Go ahead.
Can you hear me now?
Yep.
Okay. I'm calling to support hard closure of the beaches from July 3rd to July 5th. I don't, I don't, at all, this is a pursuit of life, like, for the pursuit of happiness, all about life and protecting life. Liberty and pursuit of happiness are not even part of the equation if there isn't life, right? We have state laws, mandate, receipt belt, stuff. I don't understand why we would mandate closing the beaches, wearing masks, and social distancing if it's been shown decreased deaths in the United States as well as nationally, internationally. Let's take a look Zealand and Iceland, who, as of yesterday, were COVID-free. I believe that there would be no problem at all getting a hard closure out to, coming to Newport, as social, that's an incredible platform that saturated to everybody. So once again, I just want to enforce the important hard closure. I know that the 40-hour COVID testing results are no longer available, it's taking more, about five days, and I think that all of us deserve that we have the most prudent actions you could sup... So thank you for your time, and I appreciate that you having this meeting today, and the opportunity to comment. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, go ahead, go ahead. Go ahead.
Hi, this is Julie Holburn.
Go ahead.
Good afternoon. I was born and raised here. My family loves Newport Beach. We care deeply about our city and our citizens. We desperately need you to close the beaches, prevent all the people who don't respect the health orders, and think this is the hope. I personally have this crowd, teens and adults, acting and socializing like there's no pandemic. We need the leadership of a city that's going to do what's best for its citizens, similar to what a parent would do for their child. It may not be popular, it may not be liked, but that is your job, and I'm asking you to do this, especially with all the other cities. Residents will congregate at our beaches if they are the only ones left open. It's about the long game. Please do the right thing. Stay safe and stay healthy. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll go to the next speaker, please. All right, go ahead.
Yes, my name is Janet. I'm sorry, I'll start over. My name is Janet A., and I live in Corona Del Mar. I strongly encourage you to close the beaches, keep it safe for our residents, for residents. I do feel that it's impossible to gain the public health lifeline during this current situation, and I feel that the crowds that always associate with the holiday are un- I'm sorry, I have a lot of- I thank you for your consideration. Okay, bye-bye.
Thank you. All right, go ahead.
Hi, my name is Scott. I'm a resident over on 30th Street, right on the peninsula, and actually, I'm calling from my rooftop, four houses from the sand. And I really think it'd be a big issue if you guys closed the beaches, and I'd really request that you keep them open. Specifically, a lot of these kids down here and vacationers, if you close the beaches, I feel like they're going to push themselves into the communities and the streets, and at parties and all that stuff, and they'll be more close together, and it'd be, just be safer for them to be out into the open air and do what they traditionally do. Closing the parking lots is great, and just trying to keep those people away, but for the residents, I think it's super important to keep these beaches open, if possible.
All right.
Appreciate you guys taking the time, and hopefully you guys do the right thing, which I think you will.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
We're going to take three more calls. All right, go ahead.
Yes, hi. My name is Shelley Johnston. I live in the Village, and I would like to strongly encourage you to shut the beaches, Fourth of July weekend period. On Memorial Weekend, when surrounding beaches were closed and ours was not, there was a huge influx of non-residents from areas with higher COVID rates than ours, and especially since Luna Beach has closed their beach, and the state has closed or limited parking at Crystal Cove, I'm very concerned what that will do for us. So I'm just begging you, please close for that weekend. Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right, go ahead.
Yes, my name is Ken Rossi. I live west Newport, and I have over 25. On the Fourth of July, Newport, you have shoulder-to-shoulder people walking, boardwalk, and also down your block street. We're going to expect for nobody to wear a mask. I counsel the- If you close the beach, we're just going to have people spilling over into the board, also the 100. Please make firework work out on just the Fourth of July. We will have enough officers, as they require, and make it patient offense for not wearing The other question, I realize departments share the rationale with cities when they get down. Why can't we team with the lifeguards? The cities that have closed their beaches ought to have lifeguards to come and supplement our lifeguard staff this Fourth of July weekend. I like these taken indications. Thank you.
Thank you.
Please, Bill, sit here.
All right, go ahead.
How am I going to put the couch?
All right, if you can hear me, go ahead. Hi, yeah, go ahead.
Hi, my name is Fred. I live on the peninsula, Newport Beach, between 14th and 15th. I encourage you to close the beaches. Very important. I'm looking out the window right now, and I see there's absolutely no social distancing, no masks. That's one of the problems we should address because of what's happening now with mild crowds. You can imagine what's going to happen over the weekend. And the other issue that I think the council has to look at is several of the restaurants that are down here, their employees have been tested positive for Corona-19. Some of them are telling the employees, some are not, and some are also keeping the restaurants open. That's a danger to the complete public that's down here. Third issue is, I understand that some of the lifeguards have tested positive for Corona-19. I appreciate your time. Do the right thing. These beaches should be closed. We have to take a look at what's going on at the restaurants. These owners deserve to tell the public what's going on if their employees are tested positive, which we know some of them are, and let's take care of our lifeguards. Thank you for your time. Please do the right thing.
All right, thank you. All right, let's bring it back. So, council, comments, questions? Ms. Dixon first. Go ahead.
Well, obviously, this is important to hear from our residents. Residents in the beach-facing parts of our city are those at our forefront of my mind from a public safety standpoint. I would like to see what we can do to reduce the burden that we would, by closing the beach, would impose on our businesses that do, that are eligible to remain open. We haven't addressed parking lots. I'd like at least parking lots in the business districts like at Balboa Village. These businesses are struggling, and the July 4th weekend is their biggest weekend. But if we could keep the parking lots open for the businesses that are legitimately open, are permitted to be open, I think that would be important. I hope we have a discussion about how many days this should be. I believe I'm supportive of July 4th. I think that's so compelling, but because it's a Saturday on a busy weekend, I think it merits our continued discussion. I'm just concerned, as I was six weeks ago when we discussed this, concerned about our businesses, as well as the health and safety of our residents, of course. I'm trying to find a balance. So public safety, the health and safety of our public is absolutely critical. One thing I'd like to, again, ask the police chief, if you wouldn't mind, coming up, is is there any way that we can slow down the traffic approaching the peninsula, coming onto the peninsula? Because I don't think it's easy for us, and maybe we can close the streets, but can we limit, slow down, close a lane, do something to slow the traffic and make it a little bit more of a deterrent to come on, make it not so easy?
There's going to be, and those are probably better questions for the Public Works Director and Traffic Engineering than it would be for me, but I can tell you from my experience that if we do those types of things, we see that the traffic congestion problems moves to other places. So we saw that when we closed or have constricted areas, you know, whether, let's just use a boardwalk, for example, when we did that, we pushed the bicycles over onto West Bay, and I know you heard the complaints about that as well. So it's the Fourth of July weekend. There are going to be people that are going to be coming to Newport Beach, and so frankly, when it comes to traffic, it's what our emphasis is managing it to where we're continuing with circulation, that we're getting folks moving, and that we're doing the best we can not to allow for backups, because the sheer volume that's coming down, I think that when you, I don't know, I think people expect to be in traffic when they're coming down the beach on the Fourth of July, and I don't know that increasing traffic congestion by shutting down lanes is something that would be a deterrent, and I think it has perhaps issues in terms of overall circulation and safety, frankly.
Okay, and then one other question. Would it be possible to limit the hours that the beach is open and closed, but for example, close it, I know it closes at 10:00 p.m., but close it at 10:00 a.m. and open it at 4:00, and then close at 10:00? As I hear myself speak, I think that is probably problematic, just from a logistics standpoint as well as enforcement. I was thinking for those people who do like to enjoy the beach, the residents who like to enjoy the beach and exercise, they could still go on, under this proposal, they could still be on the boardwalk? Is the boardwalk open, or is that included in the beach closure?
I think it would be difficult to close the beach and not close the boardwalk.
Yeah, I agree with you.
It's difficult to do. I think all of this is difficult, what we're talking about, so, but I understand your point.
Yeah. Okay, thank you. Today's data, as I look at this data every day, so what is concerning in terms of the incident, the cases, is that today there were 27 new cases in the age group of 0 to 17. So the young people who are now, and we see this across the country, who are becoming infected, that's concerning, because those are primarily the people who would be going to the beach. Also, in Newport Beach, the number today is 300, total cumulatively, the total is 309 people who have been infected, and we've had two deaths in Newport Beach cumulatively over the course of, since January, since the numbers started being collected. All right, well, thank you. I would like to see if we could keep some of the parking lots open that serve the businesses that are legitimately open. Thank you very much.
All right, thank you. Mr. Muldoon first, and then Mr. Erdman.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. As we've heard, the Los Angeles County Sheriff will not be forcing L.A.-area beach closures. In Newport Beach, a beach closure would be hard to enforce, and for good reason. People are not meant to be controlled by the government. Reopening the county and the nation has caused an increase of cases, as expected. Locally, Hoag Hospital is currently at less than 10% of their capacity. Generally speaking, the younger population is seeing the highest increase, so it makes sense that unfortunately seasonal lifeguards, a close-knit group, as we heard, has seen some of those positive cases. However, local medical experts that I've discussed with this morning, today, have stated that the peak occurred here a few days ago, and they expect the cases to continue to drop and plateau. Remember, it was never about eliminating coronavirus, it was about flattening the curve. Thankfully, due to better treatment and protection of the elderly and retirement communities, fatalities are dropping significantly across the board. For those diagnosed under the age of 70, the risk of fatality is the same as the flu. Again, that's from a medical expert I consulted. Additionally, the medical transfers from other regions in the state are slowing, so they're sending less patients here to Orange County hospitals. The science and data do not support this closure. Of all the places, all the places during a pandemic to be closed, the beaches and outdoor spaces are not to be. They are considered to be the safest places with the lowest transmission rates. There is no need to close our beaches, which belong to the people, especially on the Fourth of July. Law-abiding Americans are free to decide how to live their lives. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Erdman.
Just a couple of comments. Sorry, Kevin, but I just, I think it would be irresponsible of us not to listen to the public, to our constituents, and close our beaches for a short four-day period. Grace, I'd like you to know that just before this meeting started, given what the governor said today about restaurants and bars, restaurant owners on Marine Avenue have requested that the 200-block be closed to vehicular traffic so that they can move their restaurants out on the street. So I'd like you to consider, I'd like you to consider that for them this week, just this weekend. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments first? So, let me walk through my concerns, and the challenge on this one is that there's a lot of nuance, and nuance is difficult to explain, especially when you're going through public policy, and I'd like to at least walk through why I'm concerned. And I suspect that there are a lot of people in this community who would be surprised to find out that I'm concerned, and I think it's worth explaining why. This, I tend to agree with Councilmember Muldoon. I don't believe that we're seeing high transmission rates on the beach, if any. We, San Diego has, San Diego County has had a robust testing program, tracing program. They just said this past week that they have tracked the outbreaks in their county, and they have, they've traced them back to bars and restaurants, first and foremost, then house parties, then third, you're looking at retail and businesses. And they didn't mention beaches. I think that, I do believe that that data is right, and I think that's one of the reasons why we have been so adamant over the last few months, as we're going through this, to keep our beaches open, is because we just haven't seen the data and science justifying on that front. So to the extent that we're talking about that, I would just say, I think that we should be looking at that, and I don't understand why Los Angeles County closed their beaches. I really don't. So now, though, we're not, that's not, that's not my thought process. That didn't suddenly change and convince me to call an emergency meeting. What's changed in my mind is what Chief Boyle's called being stretched thin. Could we staff today? Yes. Could we staff tomorrow? Yes. But we don't know what it looks like in the coming days, because we have two lifeguards that tested positive. We have 23 in quarantine. We have another that is showing symptoms. And look, we know that people in their 20s and 30s right now, they are out, and they are the ones, I mean, when you talk with folks in the communities, they are seeing a lot more hospitalizations of people in their 20s and 30s. There's a pretty good reason. They were going to bars, they were going to restaurants, they were going to house parties, and they weren't doing a great job of social distancing. And so I'm really hopeful that all of the news that has been coming out lately will convince people, especially in their 20s and 30s, to take this seriously. And, you know, even though I don't look at, I will remind everyone, I'm in my 30s, so to the extent that I can talk to people in their 30s, just listen, please, social distance, especially in the coming weekend. It's going to be a really good opportunity to just do that. I will just say, like, start now. Start. It's, there's, the hospitalizations have gone up so much in the last week, and yeah, it is, we still have a lot of capacity in Orange County, but we don't need to test that. need to test that. So, I would just recommend that people pay attention to that. But here's where, here's where it gets concerning to me. Over the last few days, we have seen San Angeles County close. We've seen Laguna Beach close. We've seen the governor today say that he's closing the beach parking in, at all the state beaches. Pretty good reminder for everybody, Huntington Beach is mostly state beach. Bolsochica is mostly, is all state beach. The state be, the beach between us and Huntington Beach City is state beach. So, there is going to be an extraordinary lack of capacity for people to stop and actually go to those beaches this weekend. Even if they're open, they're gonna be really hard to get to. And so, with that, and then on top of that, you're also gonna add in the fact that the county closed bars today. The state, the governor, closed indoor restaurants today. So, you know that what that also means is it pushes literally everyone, everyone who comes to the peninsula onto the beach. Everyone. There will be no one, no, no one will be in the bars, no one will be in the restaurants, they're all gonna do takeout, and they're gonna go onto the beach. I'm just gonna remind everyone, open containers on the beach. Illegal, people do it all over the place. And in particular, we've seen an increase in that simply because people are doing takeout and they're grabbing the alcohol and they're going to the beach. So, we know you're going, we're going to have more people on the beach than even we were expecting before today, given all of the announcements that we've seen. So, if we know we're going to get even more people because they're coming, they're coming in from the normal places that we have always had people coming into, plus we are adding in all the more people that may come down from LA County, plus all of the people who would normally be in a bar or a restaurant are now on the beach, we are adding way more people onto our beaches. At a time where it's been described as we're already stretched thin, and now we've got 23 seasonal lifeguards quarantined, add on the fact that this is going to be a really big surf weekend. Add on the fact that this is gonna be a very large crowd weekend. And I, I just, I cannot, in good conscience, add more onto our lifeguards. We can't, we just can't responsibly ask our lifeguards to do more with less. We just can't. And that's the public safety problem that we have. That's the concern that I've got going into this weekend. And I think that there are, I recognize the concerns that people have and why, how scared they are. And we've, we've heard from so many people about so many different concerns they have about being scared, and I get it. I'm just gonna say, if we make the vote today to close the beaches, people will know. We'll make sure people know, but it will be news, and we know that. And I will tell you, the moment we do it, I am very confident that our neighbor to the north is gonna do it, too. And if in the long term, this, this has the secondary effect of reminding people this is serious, if in the long term it has the, the mental effect of convincing people that this is the, this is the right thing, and they, they should be taking this seriously, and we can see a drop in hospitalizations so that our county can get off the watch list and reopen our businesses immediately, then that's a great thing. But that's not the primary reason we're doing this. The primary reason to do this is public safety. And I'll just finish by saying, this year, everything, everything that could happen that would, that would sort of go wrong in the middle of a pandemic is going wrong. We had the glowing tides, and we're drawing people down into Newport Beach. We had the, we, we've got a Fourth of July weekend where you can kind of say, well, okay, I hope the weather's not nice. It's perfect. Well, okay, I hope we don't have high surf. Nope, best surf of the, like, the highest best surf of the year. Okay, well, at least we've got all of, you know, all of our staff ready to go. Nope, quarantined. You know, it's, it's one of those things where you, this is a dynamic situation, and I'll just come back to, I recognize what people are saying right now, but my goodness, if in two days, or even one day, we find out that we've got even more people in a quarantine situation, and we have to make the call right away, we're in a lot of trouble because we don't have enough time to actually do a hard closure. So, I think that people wish we had, we were omnipotent, that we could see in the future, that we could know exactly how July 4th is gonna play out. We can't. I can't. And so, given the limited amount of information that we've got in front of us, I'm gonna say I think it's appropriate to close on a hard basis on July 4th, which, that pains me. I just, I'm just gonna remind everybody that if we, if we move forward on this, that take your frustration out on, on someone else other than our police and, and lifeguards. Don't, don't test this out. Don't put them in hard positions. Don't, don't go on and, and, you know, make our police and, and lifeguards chase you off. This is a hard enough year for everyone. And I'll just remind everyone, I, I think that, I think that this is that time where we need to step up to, to where we, we need to be on a safety side. And it's one of those times where you just need to step apart, too. I mean, this is, this is that moment. You gotta just step into this one. You've gotta, you gotta, you gotta rise to the occasion. And I wish, I really wish I didn't have to call this meeting. I really do. But I think it's the right thing to do. So, I'm gonna make the motion for staff recommendation.
Say, I'll second.
Take a second from Mr. Erdman. Do we have any, oh, Ms. Brenner.
That was it.
All right. So, Mr. Avery.
Just real quick, I think it's important that, you know, we, we've had callers, but I think it's, it's real important that people are, it, it's a tough decision. It's one we don't like making one way or the other, really. But I encourage you to read the City Ordinance 2020-007, which sort of lines, sort of case, case by case, sort of the reasons why we're making decisions, which we've said here, but I think it sets it out very clearly. And it does obviously influence our, our thinking here. So, that's all. Thanks, Mayor.
Ms. Dixon.
I think your comments were excellent, Mayor. And I think this is a difficult decision for all of us because we all believe in freedom and liberty and for everyone to enjoy our beautiful beaches. Our surrounding cities and counties kind of put us in a very difficult position by creating a funnel for Newport Beach, that we would be the only, potentially the only city that beach that was open. I think you, I just want to echo the point you made, it was an excellent point, that if, if the numbers don't get better in Orange County, then all of Orange County is going to suffer from that. And the governor has also threatened that if the county doesn't enforce, then they're gonna cut off the purse strings. So, there's just a lot of unnecessary back and forth going. I think we have to be the responsible city and do what's right for our, our employees, our frontline public safety employees, and respect the fact that they're, they'd like nothing more than to be on the beach, doing their job. And then also our residents, who many of our residents are confronted, not just, but they'd like the beach open, many of them would like the beach open. It's just the 10, tens of thousands of people that are walking through the neighborhoods, getting to the beach. That's always been the problem. So, I, I appreciate the courage of everybody here to think carefully about what this means. It's hopefully a very short term. It's not a long term, but it's to protect our community and the health and safety of everyone in our community, even our visitors. Thank you.
Ms. Brenner.
Um, I, I'd just like to say that the person that really impressed me that called in was the businessperson from the peninsula who said, "We need to shut the beaches because it's a short-term loss for a long-term gain." And I think that we really are putting our businesses at, our businesses, not just our citizens, but our businesses at risk by, if we take this too lightly and they're not allowed to reopen as soon as possible, we can't afford for them to have to stay closed longer than they are. And I, I think that also the other caller that impressed me was the doctor from Hoag who said it would be insanity for us to leave our beaches open. Thank you.
Mr. Muldoon.
Yes, the doctor I consulted with at Hoag, who is an expert in the field, said it would not be insanity that the beaches should remain open.
All right. Let's go ahead and take a vote.
Prior to reading the vote, I'll read the ordinance title for emergency ordinance, number 2020-007. An emergency ordinance of the City Council of City of Newport Beach, closing all city-controlled beaches in the City of Newport Beach from July 3rd at 10:00 PM to July 5th at 6:00 AM, and giving the city manager discretion to close all city-controlled beaches at other times on July 3rd and July 5th if she determines closure is necessary to protect the public health, safety, and welfare. With Councilmember Muldoon voting no, the motion carries 6-1.
Thank you. I appreciate everyone's participation today, and I, I really do wish everyone to be well during this weekend. And all my best to our police department and our lifeguards. Thank you.